It's waiting for your chair.
Well, apologies for the delay and I'd like to call the meeting of January 12th of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge the flag. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Jacoponi.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Ruth.
Present.
Well, the next item on our agenda is public comment. And public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The mission, the commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have the matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Do we have anybody in the waiting room for public comment for items not on the agenda?
Not at this time.
Okay, in that case, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is new business. A scoping meeting for the proposed general plan update, housing, land use, environmental safety elements and accompanying zoning ordinance amendments, environmental impact report. And does the staff have a presentation to get us started?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. Yes, we do. Lisa Porras, Advanced Planning Manager for the City of San Carlos. So, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight's meeting serves as a scoping meeting for the environmental impact report that will be prepared as part of the Focus General Plan Update project. The Focus General Plan Update will address the housing, land use and safety elements of the San Carlos general plan and will also address corresponding changes to the zoning ordinance. Tonight's agenda will include an overview of the purpose of the scoping meeting, why we're having this meeting tonight. We also would touch upon the actual project, which is the Focus General Plan Update, and provide a brief overview and summary of the project. We also will talk about the California Environmental Quality Act and how it relates to this meeting and the preparation of the EIR. We'll look at the contents and the issues analyzed within an EIR, as well as the process and schedule, and then hear from the public. Before we get started, we wanted to do a brief introduction to the project team. On the city side, that includes myself, again, Lisa Porras, Advanced Planning Manager. We also have Al Savae, our Community and Economic Development Director, as well as team members from MIG who are our primary consultants. Tonight, we have Mike Campbell, who will be the primary presenter. And here tonight, we also have Barbara Beard, as well as Lisa Brownfield. So, as I mentioned, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive public comments on the scope of the environmental impact report. And this is an environmental impact report that needs to be prepared as part of the Focus General Plan Update project. Many attended attendees may have already participated in the community workshops that we started in the end of 2020 that continued last year in 2021. The way this works is that tonight's meeting serves as an opportunity for the public to provide oral comments, but written comments are also invited from the public as well. And we have a schedule for when that closes. And basically, both verbal and written comments helps the city to determine what it's going to analyze as part of the EIR. This is an opportunity for people to attend a public meeting, to learn about the project and to provide input, again, on the scope of the environmental impact report to be prepared. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to Mike Campbell with MIG, who's going to kick us off with the project description and then take over the rest of the agenda items that we have for presentation this evening before we hear from the public and the commission about any comments and questions they have. So with that, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, Commissioner. Happy to be here and present this tonight. It's been quite an effort and we're happy to be participating. So, I want to talk a little bit about the purpose of the housing element, the update that we're doing to the housing element. The city is required to update the existing housing element every eight years. It's a requirement under CEQA. And a part of the reason that we're doing this is to, I'm sorry, let me fix my screen here briefly. Okay, get everybody out of the way. There we go. Okay, thank you. So, yeah. It has to, the city must update the existing housing element in order to deal with the regional housing needs allocation or the RENA assignment for the city for the coming period, which is 2023 to 2031. The city's RENA goal is 2,735 new housing units over that eight-year period. They consist of 739 very low income, 425 low income, 438 moderate income, and 1,133 above moderate income units. So, in addition to that, the city determined that it will also include a buffer of 481 units for a grand total of 3,216. The buffer number is approximately 30% of the low and very low income RENA units. So, that provides a little additional buffer there for the city. Next slide, please. So, the safety element, again, like the housing element, is something that has to be updated every eight years, runs on the same cycle as the housing element. The safety element must be updated to reflect changes to state law requiring new information. And as everyone is aware, there's been a lot of changes over the last eight years or so, and the emphasis now really needs to focus on things like wildfire, sea level rise, emergency evacuation, and climate adaptation and resiliency planning as a result of climate change. So, that's what the safety element is going to be focusing on. Safety element must also include vulnerable populations in climate adaptation and in resiliency planning. And in addition to that, the resiliency planning for climate change hazards includes extreme weather events such as extreme heat, extreme drought, things that we certainly have been made aware of recently. Next slide, please. Okay, the land use element and zoning ordinance component of this, there's certain areas of the city that are anticipated to be rezoned to allow us to reach that RENA number, fulfill that requirement of additional housing units. And the way we do that is by increasing the density in certain zoning designations. So, the zoning ordinance will be amended and the amendments are anticipated to include multifamily residential and the mixed-use categories. Land use element of the general plan, including the land use map and possibly other elements, is anticipated to be updated to ensure consistency between housing element as required by state law. So, the zoning ordinance will be amended to assure that it's consistent with changes in the general plan. We need to have those two things be consistent under state law. Next slide, please. This is a look at areas that the city is considering for those zoning amendment changes. And you can see it's primarily in the downtown area, along the east side of El Camino corridor and some areas to the east of El Camino. I believe that's East San Carlos Boulevard and County Road or Old County Road areas. Next slide, please. A little bit about the, more about the housing element. The housing element is intended, it's, it will analyze the city's demographic, economic and housing characteristics. It will analyze barriers to producing or preserving housing. It will analyze the city's progress in implementing its adopted housing policies and programs. And it will analyze the city's progress in meeting the current RENA assignment. The housing element will also identify cities' goals, objectives and policies, lists of programs that will help the city carry out the general plan vision, and list of sites that can accommodate the RENA allocations, the additional 3,216 units. Next slide, please. This is a look at areas of the city that have been identified as potential sites for the new housing units. And you can see it's primarily those same areas where the zoning changes will occur, primarily the west side of the El Camino corridor, a couple of isolated areas in the western part of the city, and some of those areas on East San Carlos Boulevard and Old County Road. Next slide, please. So, to describe the project a little bit, we'll get into this, the Community and Safety Element, or the Safety Element, as we call it. Again, it's a state mandated element of the general plan, just like the housing element. It presents the city's overall goals, policies and action programs to facilitate resilience to natural and man-made hazards. It will update, the update that is proposed will focus on the new requirements for wildfire hazard planning, sea level rise and resiliency planning for the climate change conditions. These are the things that we really want to focus on with the safety element. These are some of the most pressing issues from an environmental standpoint and a community safety standpoint going forward and certainly through the next eight years. Next slide, please. This is a look at some of the FEMA flood zones as currently mapped, looking at the 100-year flood zones and the 500-year flood zones. The 100-year flood is in the darker blue areas, and the lighter blue represents the areas that would be inundated in a 500-year storm situation. Next slide, please. This one is a little bit scary. This is, shows the sea level rise anticipated for certain parts of town, primarily the areas closest to the bay and to the west of the US 101 corridor. It shows elevations in sea level between one and up to nine feet, increasing as it moves to the west. So, as you can see, it's something that we should be concerned about and certainly something we want to address in the safety element. Next slide, please. This is a look at wildfire hazards, and it's primarily in the western part of the city in the hills. This is a map that shows what are called the fire hazards severity zones. And the area in the red is classified as very high hazard severity zone. That's most of what's in the city of San Carlos. There is a little patch of high severity zone, but for the most part, it's very high. So, it's certainly something to be concerned about, certainly something you want to address in the safety element. Next slide, please. So, the land use element update and zoning amendments, as I mentioned, are part of the project. Updating the housing and the safety elements requires changes to the land use element of the general plan for consistency. So, you can't really update the housing and safety without also updating the land used elements. They're all required elements of the general plan. The zoning ordinance amendments, zoning ordinance amendments, I'm sorry, will be required to accommodate increasing the housing density, the modified site design standards and for maintaining consistency with the general plan. We always want the zoning to be as consistent as possible with their general plan. Next slide. Onto the CEQA portion of our program here. The purpose of CEQA, I presume we've all heard. Heard the term CEQA, it stands for California Environmental Quality Act of 1970. It informs decision makers and public and the public about potential significant environmental effects of proposed activities or proposed project. It identifies mitigation measures and alternatives to reduce or avoid potentially significant impacts of that project. It assists decision makers in evaluating the benefits and disadvantages of the proposed project. And it provides, most importantly, the opportunity for public involvement in the project review process. Next slide. So, what's in an EIR and what is it analyzed? This is a listing of the general contents of a typical EIR. It starts with a project description, a detailed description of what's being proposed and what will be analyzed in the document. It includes for each of the environmental subject areas in the document, it describes the environmental settings and regulatory settings for each of those subject areas. It will describe the significant environmental effects for each of those subject areas. It will also identify the unavoidable significant adverse effects, if there are any, for the project. It will include mitigation measures and also alternatives to the proposed project. Next slide, please. Now, the EIR that's being proposed with this project is what we call Program EIR. Because the project itself is policy, city policy, and the appropriate type of CEQA review is a program-level EIR, as opposed to a project-specific EIR. The city will prepare a Program EIR for the CEQA guidelines. It allows the city to consider broad policy alternatives, program-wide mitigation measures and cumulative impacts. And on a broad level, an umbrella-type approach. The Program EIR can be used to approve later projects as long as the proposed project was anticipated in the Program EIR. So, what that means is a specific site development proposal can come along and can either use this document, the Program EIR, or tear off of it to provide its own CEQA clearance for the project. And the Program EIR also provides mitigation measures and alternatives that can be incorporated into future projects. So, it really establishes a general level CEQA clearance that can be modified or, as I said, it's here to off of for specific projects when they, when they come forth for development. Next slide, please. This is a list of the areas, the environmental subject areas that will be covered, that will be analyzed in the EIR. This is a typical list for what's included in most EIRs. And for this project, it's fairly comprehensive, covering everything from aesthetic impacts to wildfire and also including cumulative impacts and alternatives. Next slide, please. This is an overview, a general overview of the EIR process. This is what we'll be going through to take the project ultimately to a public hearing before the city council for adoption. So, at the top of the list, there's the public scoping and the NOP. That's where we are today at this level. The city's issued the notice of preparation, the NOP, posted it on the website, made it available to the public. And tonight is the EIR scoping meeting where we invite the public to provide comments on what should be included in the EIR and what should be covered. So, our next steps following tonight's meeting will be the consultants, us at MIG, will be putting together our technical analyses for various areas. Example, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, traffic, using our subconsultants as well. So, we'll work on the technical analyses and we'll prepare what's called an administrative draft EIR. This is our first cut at the EIR, the draft EIR, and the administrative draft is prepared for the city's review. So, we'll submit that to the city. The city will review it, make comments, make adjustments as necessary. We'll go back and forth with the city and our consultants until we get a version that the city is satisfied with. And then at that point, the draft EIR will be made available for public review. So, the public review is a 45-day period in which the public and any responsible or other public agencies can submit comments. At the close of the 45-day comment period, the city will come back to us. We will work on preparing responses to the comments that were submitted and will prepare a final EIR. And then at that point, the city will be prepared to go forward with the project and the CEQA document, the final EIR, to public hearings before the planning commission and ultimately city council. So, the overall project schedule, not just the EIR now, but the entire project, this kind of gives a timeline of where we've been and where we're, where we're going. We started in 2019 with the Welcome Home San Carlos. In 2020, we began the community engagement process for the project, discussed existing conditions and the city's plans and standards. In 2021, the community engagement process was continuing throughout that year. And then now at the beginning of 22, or 2022, we are draft, we've drafted, we're in the process of drafting the housing and the environmental safety elements, vetting that with the community. And tonight, we're at the environment, we're beginning the environmental review stage. So, the green arrow shows the EIR scoping meeting. This is where we are tonight in the overall process for the project. What's to come, what will come next, following the environmental review process, will be, and the drafting of the elements themselves. The state's Housing and Community Development Department will review it, provide their input, and then we'll take the project forward for approval. With approval of the project and adoption of the EIR, I believe the Housing and Community Development Department gets one more look at it for a final review. And then ultimately by 2023, by this time of year from now, hopefully we'll have an approved project and we'll have met our deadline for compliance with the state law. So, that's a look at the overall schedule. And with that, I think we have one more slide, yes. And to reemphasize what Lisa said at the beginning, tonight is our opportunity to present or to present the project briefly, not going to pull out of detail yet. But tonight, the main purpose is to collect input from the county or from the public and from the commission on what they think should be included in the EIR. This is an EIR scoping meeting. So, written comments can also be submitted to Lisa's attention through the end of the month, January 31st. The NOP, the Notice of Preparation is available for viewing at City Hall. It's in the library and most conveniently it's online. You can go online to the city's website. You can read it. It's got a lot more detail about the project and the EIR process and the things that we'll be evaluating. And again, any additional information regarding the project or the EIR process, you can submit your comments to Lisa and her mailing address is shown there on the slide. And with that, that concludes the presentation. And I will be available to answer any questions for the commission, as well as Barbara and Lisa from MIG, who are with us tonight. Back to you, Lisa Porras.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. And first, we'll have this opportunity for questions from the planning commission and then we'll open for public comment. So, are there questions from the planning commission? I see we have questions from Commissioner Clements and then Commissioner Garvey to start.
Hey, Chair. Just a quick question. How did we choose the number of units for the buffer for the RENA goal as we prepare the site inventory? How did you land at 30%?
I'll take a stab at that. Vice Chair Clements, thank you for the question. So, the additional So the additional, uh, thirty percent, um, buffer units. Um, the thirty percent is thirty percent of the affordable, of the affordable component of our Rena, Rena allocation. So it's not thirty percent of the twenty-seven, thirty-five total Rena, it's thirty percent just the affordable housing portion. Recognizing that, um, anytime we identify sites, it's not one hundred percent guaranteed that those all will be, um, developed as affordable units. So in, um, in conversation with, um, other, uh, cities and other kind of best practices approaches that we've seen being used. By other jurisdictions that are further along in the housing element process. We began to understand that it was, um, a good idea and a recommendation to, um, add what's being called buffer units to the Rena allocation. So that's the reason why we decided to do it, we felt it made a lot of sense, so we didn't put, you know, every site, in case one site didn't develop as affordable. We had some buffer units to go by. And the reason why we chose thirty percent, this was something that we've seen, um, other cities do. Um, and if Lisa Brownfield wants to jump in here, that would be great. I'm trying to remember if there's any more specific reasoning why we chose thirty percent. But it was a common, um, a common percentage that we've seen, um, other cities use. Um, and we felt it was, um, something that we could accommodate reasonably. Um, I do recall some other cities have, larger cities have chosen to, um, elect a fifty percent buffer. But for San Carlos, we felt thirty percent, uh, buffer, um, would make a lot of sense and it was something that we felt comfortable doing. And if any of my colleagues want to jump, um, in on that, please feel free.
Hey everybody, this is Lisa Brownfield, Lisa Porras really summarized it well. Um, in the sense that there is some, you know, there's a range of what jurisdictions do. Some cities don't have any buffers at all, which is, um, kind of risky. Um, and other cities have a lo- a lot, like up to fifty percent. The, the, throughout the state, the norm is usually twenty to thirty-five percent. And so with the city selecting thirty, they're in that norm. And that's, and it's just a, it's just a estimate of how. Likely and how many kind of back pocket, um, you know, sites you might want to kind of keep in your back pocket and you have, if you have to use them later, you will. So, um, it's cities well within the norm for, of course, selecting thirty percent.
Thanks, could I add a follow-on question, which is just what are the ramifications of choosing a somewhat larger buffer? In case the sites don't develop as affordable housing for the following cycle?
There is a slight ramification and because of recent state laws saying that you can't reuse, can, uh, continually to re, continually reuse sites that you've already identified. The downside of not accept, of not having enough identified is that, um, if the sites don't change. And you need to substitute in a new site. You need to have enough of a, of a pool or, um, in order to accommodate that. So if you have a smaller, a smaller number, like let's say you only have ten percent. Um, of those sites, and what if none of those sites are, um, likely to, and none of those sites are turning over? Then it, um, will give the city problems during the, the implementation of this Rena cycle. And so the, as I said, the thirty percent is a pretty good buffer. Um, so that, so that you're covering your next eight years and then allowing for a little bit, um, uh, you're not, you're not being too aggressive. Naming too many other sites that will penalize you in the next, um, Rena cycle.
Thank you, Lisa. Commissioner Garvey?
Uh, thank you Chair Ruth, um. Mike, thank you for that excellent presentation, I really appreciated it. I had one question, uh, for you, I just wanted to understand it a little clearer. You said that this, uh, program EIR will act, I'm not sure the phrase you used, as an umbrella for projects. Uh, in the future, and so I'm, I'm interested in knowing, so does that mean? If the city council were to change the zoning, say on a certain piece of land and that would allow for a multifamily. Uh, housing development to go in, that that is the kind of project that would then be. Included in this EIR and a separate EIR wouldn't be needed, is that, can you help me understand if I, if I'm thinking about that right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, to respond to the question. That's basically correct, the, if the project, a specific development project comes in. It's going to have to undergo, uh, its own SEQA review. And if there's a programmatic. EIR in place that's been adopted already that anticipated that level of growth for that particular site. Um, then the project, the specific project can actually reuse that existing EIR. And not have to do a new EIR for the project itself. Uh, it may rely on some of the mitigation measures from the program EIR and some other things, but yeah, that's the basic idea. Uh, and it's, that's at the, you know, planning department's discretion, whether they would want to see a, you know, a smaller scale. EIR, you know, that tears off of the, the program EIR or a separate initial study, uh, it's, it's at their discretion. But having a pro- programmatic EIR adopted and in place. Um, can save a lot of steps in the sequel review for, you know, subsequent, specific development projects.
That, that makes a lot of sense and, and it seems like. That the planning staff for the city would have an opportunity if it was a very large development. If they wanted to, as, as you say, tier off it and, and do a separate EIR, they could decide to do that. Or they could decide that the mitigation measures that are included in this program EIR are sufficient and additional SEQA isn't needed. Am I, am I thinking about that right?
Yep, yeah, that's correct.
All right, thank you, that's very helpful, that's my only question, thank you.
Um, uh, Mike, this is Lisa Brownfield, can you, um, clarify, because I would just want to make sure. Members of the public understand the nuances. We're not saying that. A development projects, even if they're covered under the sequel, this, uh, programmatic EIR. Won't have any environmental review, they would still have an environmental review. But that environmental review and the city's determination to use the program EIR as the environmental review. It, um, how do I go, I'm messing up on my comment. Um, my comment is, is that the, oh, development project, when it comes in, it will always have some sort of look at, at, uh, under the environmental review process. The city could decide if it wants to apply the existing programmatic EIR. And use that or if additional information that's more specific to the site will need to have it. So that's a decision to be made, I just want the public to think that the program EIR will allow for every project to go through without any additional review.
No, that's a good point, it, it's not a free pass for, uh, any development that comes along. Uh, uh, as I said, the planning department has discretion to require, you know, maybe a new initial study to look at, you know. Implications of the project itself, maybe it has a particular issue with biological resources or it's in a particular area that's subject to traffic. Uh, restrictions or something and they can ask for additional studies, um, you know, as, as required. Thank you, Lisa.
Commissioner Yakapone. Oh, okay, we'll go with Commissioner Bradley and then Commissioner Yakapone.
Thank you. Does that mean? Uh, well, looking at, uh, Senate bills. Uh, nine, I believe, nine or ten. That mean that, uh, the. State and Turpin are review. Authority of projects and since their idea is to streamline it so they go faster. I could see that this is a move that would slow that effort down and I'm wondering. We'll resolve that conflict later, maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but it's just a concern, I see. Get an answer now.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I would. Suggest that the city would probably be in a better position to answer how they're going to be implementing, uh, SB nine and SB ten. Um, those would allow, uh, you know, approval of increased density on, on. Project sites. But they're still subject under, under both of those to local, um. Laws and regulations regarding development standards and, you know, other factors, it's not, um, an automatic approval. It certainly allows for increased density and takes a certain amount of control of that out of the city's hands. But the city still has discretion to use development standards and other things so that projects that come in under those. Under those, um, bills. Would still be compatible with the, the existing neighborhoods. Um, you know, the density increase may be inconsistent with a, with an existing neighborhood. Um, but before a project gets built, it's still going to be subs- to city standards for setbacks and height and FARs and things like that.
And if I could just add, uh, this conversation just briefly, um, number. Form the, um, planning commission, that we are planning to have a study session with the planning commission, um, in February. And this will probably be, we're looking at the possibility of a joint planning commission and RDRC meeting. To, um, present, um, the urgency ordinance that was just recently passed at city council this past Monday. So we can go over, um, our approach and, um, how, um, we're going to address SB nine in a more permanent way. Um, over the next ten months, so more to come on that.
And, um, just for the commission. On Monday night, the council adopted an urgency ordinance on SB nine, uh, having interim standards, uh, to, to respond to that law.
Thank you. Are, are we ready to move to Commissioner Yakapone's question? I think so, Commissioner Yakapone.
Thank you Chair, um, and thank you, um, to the NIG team for a, a good presentation in the background. Um, two questions, I, I think they'll both be, uh, fairly, uh, narrow. Um. How will the city coordinate? Let's say it's safety update with neighboring cities. Um, you know, it strikes me that flooding and wildfire as two examples are. You know, they don't know actually where the political boundaries are, so how, how do we coordinate? Uh, our plans so that there is a, an understanding consistency? I'm presuming the other cities are working on the same schedule for January next year.
Lisa, is that something you bar?
I guess, I'll answer it. Um, so Commissioner, thank you for your question, that's actually a question about the project rather than the EIR. I'm happy to answer this question, but we really are kind of focusing on the, on the EIR and what needs to be included. That being said, um, the general plan policies for the safety element that we're developing, that we're developing right now. Talk about coordinating with, um, the one shoreline projects and any and num- other number of projects and efforts. That are going on region wide, not only for, um, resiliency and sea level rise, but also for the, um, for fire. Um, the state of California and the CAL FIRE, um, or, or organization of the state. They're really also pressing really for re, looking at things more regionally, because as you know, fires are regionally wide. Sea, you know, sea level rises really, um, regional and certainly not, um, uh, San Carlos specific. So, uh, through all of that, we are going to be encouraging the city to move ahead in a more regional, um, orientation. And we are currently, um, talking to the larger regional organizations as we are preparing the, um, the element itself.
Thank you. Um, my, my second question, uh, will then be more on topic. Um. And I, I, I don't know if, uh, EIRs typically consider this, but as we're thinking about the housing element and the number of. New residences that we're targeting, it strikes me that, um, one of the big impacts could be on something that. The, the public values very highly in San Carlos and that's our quality of education, numbers of schools, school infrastructure. Uh, is, is, um, impact on education. A typical EIR topic? Or, you know, is it, is it included?
Mr. Chair, they, I, I think the answer is, is yes, I mean, the, the, the EIR will always evaluate. Uh, school capacity as, as one of the areas. They look at all city services and utilities and things like that. And school capacity is one of those, one of those subjects, so we'll. The, the EIR will address the, uh, existing situation, the, the existing setting. Um, what schools would serve the area, which will serve the, you know, the planning area. What, what are their enrollment numbers now, what kind of, what does the capacity look like? And then with the anticipated increase in residential units. Um, what kind of an impact is that going to create to them? So we'll have those conversations with representatives from the school districts. And that will be part of the analysis in the public services section of the EIR.
Uh, I really appreciate, um, that that is going to happen and it, it, uh, wasn't specifically clear in looking over the list, so. Good to know it's, um, embedded in there.
Any other questions from commissioners before we, um, move to the co- public comment? Okay, let's go to public comment. Um, if you would like to make a public comment on agenda item five A focused general plan update scoping meeting, now is the time to speak. You may join the Zoom meeting or call, um, the number shown on the screen and enter the meeting ID. And you can virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen or on the phone, press star nine. And then star six to unmute when called upon. And we'd like to have the comments be, um, two minutes or less.
Uh, through the chair, if I, I just wanted to draw the public's attention to a clerical error, this slide. Um, the meeting ID is actually, um, the last digits on the Zoom link. So if you notice between the two, one ends in five, one, eight, seven, and the other one is shown as eight, four, nine, nine. That's a clerical error, the meeting ID, um, if you want to join is eight, five, five. Excuse me, eight, eight, five, two, three, two, eight, five, one, eight, seven. Just to clarify, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And, um, do we have anyone in the waiting room or on the phone for public comment?
Yes, we have Dimitri, Dimitri, you have two minutes to speak and you are unmuted.
Welcome Dimitri.
Yeah. Um, I have, um, I'm the president of the GSE board and I'm just going to request, uh, some additional time. Um, a couple of, uh, residents asked that, uh, uh, they see their time to make. So, uh, before we start my timer, I'd, I'd like to get that clarified.
Okay, that's, that, can we aim for about four minutes?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I'm, I'm hoping to be, uh, hoping to be under that. Uh, I'm not going to be able to look at the timer because I, I have the notes, uh, uh, on a, on a separate. A page, so just give me one second so I can, uh, take a look at the notes. Um. Um, a, a couple of things I, 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 I want to accommodate. Uh, in previous meetings, um. I do not recall, uh, zoning changes being discussed for Old County Road that are immediately adjacent to the. Uh, GESC neighborhood or, uh, nor for, uh, East San Carlos Avenue. In any previous discussions, yet here they're, they're being taken as a done deal in a sense. Uh, so I'm a little confused by that. Um. So I have a question about that, I have a question about. Uh, the fact that during the inside visioning discussion, uh, there was significant, uh, 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 community feedback, uh, feedback from the, um. Uh, uh, city council that, um, uh, Tankledge, uh, uh, terminal. Um, Old County Road south of, uh, the existing neighborhood. Uh, be used as, as housing and I don't see that proposed in this development, so I'm, I'm a little taken aback by the fact that. Um, uh, E, E, East San Carlos is being proposed for zoning changes. Um, also, it isn't clear on the, on the map. Uh, what actually is being proposed, uh. Uh, around the GESC community. Um, and if there could be some clarification, is this, is it all MU and forty, or is there some MU and fifty being proposed? What does MU and forty mean? Is it the height of the buildings? Is there, is there some capacity of, you know, density requirement that's different between those? The map itself is incredibly confusing. There's a section by Al Camino that has, that's color coded and there's no color that seems to exist on the EIR in the documentation that was provided. So there's this sort of gray color and there's nothing that seems to correspond to that in the math. So I'm afraid that it's extremely difficult to make comments on this, given this sort of, you know, what I, what I don't see is, is any, any previous discussion for East San Carlos Avenue in any of the previous meetings. There was discussion about the area very north of the city by Al Camino. So I'm curious how, how, or you know, what, what staff's response to that would be. Increased residential density for the six cycle arena means here. So are these done deals or is there still some discussion that's going to happen regarding that? And the other thing I want to point out regarding East San Carlos Avenue is that cuts right through the heart of our existing residential neighborhood. So it's not like adjacent to it, it's right in the middle of it. So if we're going to ask for increased density and height right in the middle of an existing single family neighborhood whose backyards are going to be immediately adjacent and abutted to, 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 you know, potentially high density housing on each side, it seems like a very given, particularly given all of the feedback that was given about increased housing on the east side south of terminal. So I'm, I'm, I'm very confused by this, by this process and the fact that we're only supposed to talk about the EIR. EIR issues that we need to discuss are things like the airport has a temporary flooding. I forget what you call them levees. They have a temporary levy. They don't even have a full, full time levy, let alone have it set up. So, so you know, we're not going to have some kind of catastrophic flood event. So, you know, we have that, we have flooding issues within our community that we're going to have to deal with. So it, it just feels like everyone's put in the cart before the horse here a little bit. And, and you know, where, where was that question about Old County Road in, in those areas that I specifically am asking about? And what are those proposals?
Okay, well, thank you for those comments and we'll take those into consideration going forward. Do we have additional callers?
Yes, we have David Krab.
Welcome, David.
David, you're unmuted. And you have two minutes to speak.
Now I'm unmuted. Okay.
Welcome, David.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I'm going to reiterate what I've said at every single meeting we've been to so far is the housing element is too low for the need that we're actually generating in San Carlos. The arena numbers are not high enough. That the two million square feet of biotech or more is going to be looking more like a requirement for like forty five hundred to more, maybe even six thousand units of housing. So that needs to be taken into consideration. I'm not going to push it any further. I've kept repeating it many times. Second is, when you're talking about rezoning land, is there a way or are you thinking of a way to doing that in such a way that it can only be happening if the developer of the land is actually willing to give the city serious community benefits? Some cities will zone a parcel of land for a certain density. And then if the, you know, the developer provides additional community benefits, then they can get additional units on there. And I think we make the mistakes, all the cities make mistakes of upzoning land. Basically, as soon as you upzone a piece of property, you've given that landowner some free money. And he doesn't really owe you much of anything. And so it's time for us to recoup the money that we're going to, we add to the value of these properties. So that's something I think you should consider. I was interested in the idea of the EIR covering over everything else. And by right versus ER, I think needs to be considered and whether or not the city might want to do more administrative approvals and exempt to EIRs for the local projects if possible. And lastly, here I got talked about changing land uses in the fire zones. I'm just, I haven't got an answer for this, but I'm just curious how we're going to actually do that since we're already built out in the land in the fire zones pretty much, including the house that I live in. So those are my main points. I'll try to write a letter, kind of filling these in a little bit in the future because I run all the time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, next caller.
No callers at this time.
While we're seeing if the other callers come on, I see there's two comments provided in the, in the, in the Zoom chat feature. Should I, should I read these out so that they can become part of the record?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. That would be great.
Okay, so from John Rose, he says, will the EIR include consideration of the projected future need for dedicated EV charging stations for most families in San Carlos? This will have a direct growing demand for parking spaces in all new developments. Thank you to John for that one. And from Scott Marsters. So if MU dash N forty is a density of forty units per area on East San Carlos Avenue, does the height limit of thirty feet still stay in place? So that's the second comment. And we'll capture those for the, for the record.
Thank you.
Are there additional, any additional callers in the meantime? And I'll, I'll emphasize that, that the public comment, written public comment can be, and maybe Lisa should reiterate this, but the written public comments can be submitted up until the end of the month. Here we go.
That's correct. I just changed the screen or excuse me, the slide on the screen to show this and verify this to the public, the written comments. So tonight's not the final opportunity. We will, we have, we are writing down and receiving all the written comments from tonight's meeting, but also if you want to submit written comments, those would be due January thirty first. And those can be sent to me via email at the email at the bottom of the screen, which is L P as in Paul, O R R A S, as in Sam, at thecityofSanCarlos.org. Or you can put them in the regular mail to us at six hundred Elm Street, San Carlos Planning Division. You can send those to our way as well. And again, written comments for the scope of the EIR would be due January thirty first.
Thank you. And if there are no, well, actually I see that there's one more chat message and, and this one is from Patty M M. And it says, thanks for asking about school capacity. Will the sheriffs be asked about changes to patrols and the general contract with the city necessitated by the proposed development? Okay, that's a good question. Thank you for that. Are there any other callers?
Yes, we have Josh Wallace. Josh, you are unmuted and have two minutes to speak.
Hi, this is Sandra Wallace, Josh's other half. Just a quick question about being able to see the, especially the maps from tonight's slideshow. And where can we go and see those?
Lisa, I can move. Yes, I will go ahead and answer that question.
Thank you.
If you go to the project website, which is www.Sancarlos2040.org. If you go to the project website, you will see on the right hand side of the project webpage a link to the notice of preparation. So it's called the NOP, you know, an acronym, but the notice of preparation will take you right to the description of the proposed changes to be included as part of the overall project description. And the project, I will, what I will say, and maybe Lisa or Mike can help me out here, Lisa Brownfield or Mike. But the project description has not been finalized. And I just want to acknowledge some of the comments that have been made here tonight that are asking about permanent determinations made for heights or zoning designations, or you know, how, how have we decided these things? The, the project description has not been finalized, but it will be finalized as part of the draft environmental impact report. That will include a very clear description of the, of the, of the project as well as the, obviously the environmental impacts. We will take a look at the maps that have been posted on the project website to make sure that they are as clear as they can be. If one were to zoom in on them, to make sure that everyone has a fair chance to understand what the proposals include. And we, and we can certainly follow up with some of the questions that were raised here tonight to talk about that. So again, the NOP in full, including the maps, is available at SanCarlos2040.org. And again, we'll take a look to make sure that those are as clear as possible.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add, in response to Patty's question, the previous question, the answer is yes, the EIR will address sheriff, police, sheriff, fire service. Those are all public services that are addressed in the EIR, similar to schools. We'll find out what the existing level, you know, service levels are for those departments and we will analyze the impact of the project on police and fire services.
Thank you. Do we have any additional people to speak in the public comment?
There are none at this time.
Okay, and I think that covers all the chat messages. So if there's nobody else calling in, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move that we close the public comment period for this item.
One second. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes.
Okay. Can I just, Chair Ruth, just for, just for a second, I mean, this was not a public hearing item. So I just want the public to know that this does not mean that they can't continue to, to provide their written comments till the end of the month. So it's a new business item, not a, I just caught it too late for you guys to make a motion.
I see. I, indeed. So I guess we were closing the public comment just for, in the for tonight, but I think we showed the slide with the address, opportunities to provide input through January thirty first.
And through the chair, if I may read one more item into the public, into the record here. You can capture it for the minutes. And there was another comment made by Patty which is asking, will you look at public transit to the parks and open space areas in the city? So I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, well, now we're in the planning commission discussion comment period. And although we don't have to take formal action, not required or requested, it is our opportunity to, to voice our perspectives. And preferably focused on, on what potential environmental effects should be evaluated in the EIR. And so we'll start with Commissioner Garvey. I see you first.
Hey, thank you, Chair Ruth. I had a question. Can I still ask a question?
Sure, it's a discussion, so we can.
I wanted to follow up on the timeline that was put out earlier for the, for where we are and what, what has happened and what is coming later. I think, Mike, it was you who said, that as a part of the next steps, there'll be a list available for where these new additional thirty two hundred and sixteen housing units will be located. Can you tell me, does this come before the draft EIR is released? Or does this come out as a part of that whole draft EIR and it's all discussed and reviewed sort of in total? How does that work?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the EIR will include a project description, as Lisa was describing. That's going to be a very comprehensive summary of what the project entails and it will have that level of detail as far as the sites that are being considered for the new housing, you know, which of the zoning districts are going to be amended? Which of the land use parks will be updated? All that, the more specific information that we weren't able to present tonight will be included in the project description. That's part of the draft EIR.
Thank you. Thanks very much. That's very helpful.
Chair, if I could add to that question?
Please.
Thank you. I wanted just to clarify per, I think Dimitri's comments that the maps that are contained in the packet, which I personally had a really hard time pulling up because the packet was so large. But the maps that are in there now shows what the current general, general plan designations are for sites. And then indicates potential zoning code change sites and that potential and a draft of the six cycle housing sites. Is there a way to? I also wanted clarification, is the EIR study and or the material is going to clearly call out, for instance, while some of these sites that are indicated for the inventory, which one of them would be a change from the current housing element designation? That to me was a little hard to put together, given the information provided. I know the inventory, you know, has to be proposed concretely. I just wasn't clear as to which of the sites would end up having some kind of designation change as a result of being included in the inventory. Is there a way to tell that from the materials provided and will the EIR address really the change rather than the new indication? Does that make sense?
I, I understand your question, Vice Chair Clements. Thank you for that. And and I think if I can just respond to that to make sure I understand the question clearly or that I understand it at least, is that we have a map that identifies the housing sites which we're required to by state, the State Department of Housing and Community Development to actually identify parcels that we have identified that are being used to fulfill our regional housing needs allocation. So that's one map. And then on another map, we're showing here's some potential zoning changes that we are looking at as a solution to meet the arena. And I think what you're asking for is an easy way to see maybe perhaps an overlay of both of those maps, like of, of the housing sites that have identified, have been identified, you know, which ones are undergoing a zoning, a zoning amendment or modification.
That's a good way to put it, Lisa, because I wrote down that the zoning ordinance changes would be due to changes in density or site design standards and consistency with the state law. And so I just wasn't, it wasn't clear if some of these sites being identified already could accommodate the desired density, which I think the default is assume thirty dwelling units per acre. Or whether there was another reason that the zoning code or the zoning changes might affect the sites when it actually may not be a material change in the density. It might be something else driving that. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I think we can
FaceTime post Harrison. That's exactly what is
Well, let me ask our, our consultant team, Lisa Brownfield, if you can jump in here and and maybe perhaps elaborate on how we might be able to reconcile, not reconcile, but be able to further elaborate on that. and maybe perhaps elaborate on how we might be able to reconcile, not reconcile, but be able to further elaborate on that. Um, whether as part of the project description, um, that's part of the E I R, or perhaps in um, some supplemental materials that we can provide to the public and community so they can follow sort of kind of the progress. And it certainly, we understand that this is a pretty, pretty significant uh, update to the housing element. There's lots of changes that um, are going to be in play in order to meet a much higher regional housing allocation than we've seen in past years. At least I think you might be on mute.
Or? Thank you. I'm sorry. Um, yes, we can create a map that shows that that basically overlays the two, two maps and and what the ultimately, the map, the new map will show is those possible housing sites that are in areas that would have a land, a possible land use designation change and a zoning designation change. I, if you recall, I, many of the, many, many of the sites are identified. Um, you know, if you just visually, kind of visually remember what the two maps look like, not all sites, but many of the sites um, will need to be undergoing the zone and the land use change and the and the zoning designation change. And you have to, through the um, through our planning process that we've had so far, we we started out with, and as some of the Dimitri and some of the other, uh, and Mr. Crabbe and some of the other people who participated in previous workshops, um, will recall, we started out with what can we, what can the city accommodate without changing any density, without changing any land use designations? So that's where we started. And then when we found that there was a gap and a deficiency, then we looked at, then that started the process of looking at of how are you going to make these, how are you going to meet the arena numbers? And what's going to be necessary to meet the arena numbers? Um, what land you said changes might occur? Is it just changing the standards, or is it actually increasing density and changing some designations in themselves? And so the maps that you're seeing tonight about the land, about the zoning changes are a result of that kind of analysis, starting with, do we have to change anything? The answer was yes, we do have to change. And then the next question is, what do we need to change? And kind of where, based on what the community told us, the areas that they are more amenable to changes occurring? And the types of changes they would like to see. We talked about, in one of the workshops, we talked about the mixed use neighborhood area of zone in in particular. And then we've also talked about the areas and, you know, in the mix, what's now called the M U N B, as well as some of the other areas throughout the city. So we've had that through the public process, we've been looking at and talking to the community about possible changes in these areas as they were going to be needed. That being said, we will create a land use, we will create a map that shows those specific possible sites um, that will undergo a land use designation change as well.
And I would add that for the E I R, in addition to what is included in the project description on that, E I R will have a separate analysis section about land use and planning. And in there, then we will cover um, that same subject. It'll discuss in a pretty fair amount of detail what the changes are and what the, what the implications would be.
And just as a reminder, if I could follow up to this conversation, just as a reminder, um, for those that may not know, and maybe some people are very familiar with the content and structure of housing elements. One of the things that H C D requires us to do is provide a table, so it's not just a map, but it's a table that identifies um, parcels by their successor parcel number, by their address. And that is something that we absolutely have to create as part of this work. And in this way, it will really help someone be able to determine, you know, they can just type in their address or look on this list to see if the site that they're, have a question about is um, on the list as a housing, um, as a housing site to meet the arena. And on that table or spreadsheet that we will prepare as part of that, we can include what the existing or current land use and zoning designation is, and then also show what the proposed land use designation and zoning modification would be. So it would be very clear to track on a row by row basis, parcel by parcel basis, those changes. And that's something that we have to do. So I just wanted to take a moment and clarify that that level of detail has to be included in the housing element. Anyway, but we'll make sure to make that uh, very obvious and clear um, along the way.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the clearer we can be about what the project is and, you know, would be the the better comments that we will get from folks, which I know it's a long process to gather feedback, so um, so thank you for that.
Okay, good discussion so far. Are there additional thoughts or particular concerns, opportunity for the planning commissioners to um, express um, what they feel is important? Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. I I feel it's important to give um, to talk about how important it is um, to consider any new housing to be located um, close to our Caltrain station. I really appreciate what Lisa said when we were talking about uh, previous uh, community comments relating to um, increased density along El Camino, along certain parts of San Carlos Avenue, along certain sides of of Laurel Street. Um, then also to be um, recognizing that we have a great train station and that uh, higher density housing located within walking distance of that train station um, is a good idea. So I just wanted to sort of augment what Lisa was saying and her good comments and and make sure that the the train station i- it's a big part of our community and one that I think we can leverage uh, with more higher density housing nearby. Thank you.
And while maybe other commissioners are formulating their thoughts, I'll I'll make one myself, which um, is that the um, it's important, to me, it's important that the transportation and circulation implications be um, thoroughly included um, for new housing along El Camino, but also um, I noticed that some area, some parcels are being considered in the um, in the higher risk areas for fires, and that the um, that the egress uh, for uh, in the case of fires and how that would be managed needs to be taken into consideration if we're going to increase the population in some of those areas. Some of our roads are quite narrow and um, and if there was an emergency, that we should, we should um, study the potential effects there. So those are just a few, a few of the uh, areas that I think need to be included. Additional thoughts from, from the commissioners? Eleanor, is your hand up from last time, or do you have?
I forgot I had one, one additional comment. I wanted to also attach myself to a previous commenter, I don't remember her name, uh, relating to uh, making sure that new multifamily developments have uh, the capacity for electric vehicle charging. In my time on the commission, I know with all multi-vehicle prod, multi-unit projects, um, we have included that as a sort of a standard condition. So I guess my question is, if this is included in the program E I R as a mitigation measure, I guess that means that it automatically um, makes its way towards any project that might stem from that. I I I don't want to lose sight of of that as a condition or a mitigation measure, and I appreciate that the uh, that the caller raised it, and and I just wanted to associate myself with making sure that that there are those charging stations available. Thank you.
I can comment, Mr. Chair, on that briefly. I, you know, we will evaluate, you know, energy is one of the sections in the E I R uh, that that will talk about that. Um, and typically, you know, E V charging requirements come out of some city codes city codes or state requirements. So it's there, the requirement to build those things in is is there essentially. It wouldn't be needed to be described in the E I R as a mitigation measure. Um, it's really just kind of a standard condition of approval now. It goes with most building codes and reach codes and all the the changes that have happened in the state um, energy requirements as well. So um, rest assured, it'll be included in the, in the project, and it'll be discussed in the E I R.
Thank you very much.
Let me follow up on that before we go to Commissioner Clements' question. And so I understand that for specific development, specific projects, that there will be E V charging requirements, but we're also being faced with the gradual replacement of the of the gasoline-driven cars by electric, which is going to create a need for charging stations that maybe be on to just um, ensuring there are outlets in the new developments that um, it'd be a bigger impact. And so, and that might have been what that um, what that public comment was referencing. So would this also be included in the, in the, sort of the need for public charging availability? Is that something that would be included in the E I R?
That's a good question. I I, that kind of takes it beyond the realm of what's in place in terms of codes today. Um, Barbara, maybe you can help me with this. Is is there a way to address potential future uh, demand for charging stations?
I just unmuted myself and turned my camera on. I don't know if people can hear me.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, perfect. I think at this point, my response would be that the city's newly adopted C M A P, the Climate Mitigation Action Plan, would actually be um, a great guiding document and resource for of both energy use and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions that the city's committed itself to. And um, we would look to that document to see what it says about E V charging stations. And see if it's something that's already in place in that document. And um, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is updating its um, G H G Energy Commission, uh, energy consumption um, requirement analysis for E I Rs. And so it'll be a combination of different sources of information that will feed into this discussion. But um, you know, I think overall, the E I R is going to focus on the housing element and the safety element, and it's not going to tackle you know, overall transportation section or um, trying to bring in charging stations for land uses other than the new residential uses.
Okay, thank you for that feedback. Um, Commissioner Clements, you have a question?
Thank you, um, Chair. I uh, wanted to build on something that we heard in public comment, and as we are doing the safety analysis that we also are proposing uh, housing inventory that falls into the higher risk areas, how does the analysis accommodate when both of those things are true, and and what does that look like? Excuse me. So I'm assuming that it's acceptable under the state guidelines um, to show that housing not only is in those areas, but will be growing in those areas. Um, or else we wouldn't have shaded in a couple of parcels for the inventory in those areas. But what does that look like from the E I R's analysis? And um, are there conclusions about um, you know, other material standards or things like that that could offset, mitigate the risks posed?
Oh, Mr. Chair, the um, E I R will, I mean, one of the reviewing agencies will be the um, local fire or Cal Fire. They will be reviewing the E I R and providing comments, and if the impacts of adding residential units in a high or severe fire risk zone uh, are significant, we will certainly be hearing from them um, on what to do to mitigate that. So um, we're going to probably be following their lead um, as far as what, you know, how to address development in a high fire zone.
But I guess the same, or the sea level rise challenge, because obviously we've selected some areas for the inventory in the area that with worst-case scenarios could be subject to sea level rise. So I say a question, isn't it just?
Right. If I could just add on to uh, what Mike said, this is Barbara Beard with M I G, and I've been working on the safety element um, in some detail. The wildfire section of the safety element has to be sent to Cal Fire Border Forestry. They have a land use planning program. And the wildfire section gets sent to them for their review and concurrence. And that happens um, hopefully before the E I R is published and sent out for public review. It's, it's a key um, aspect of the safety element to get the Border Forestry's review of the wildfire section. The state law for general plan safety elements addressing wildfire has been um, greatly supplemented or enhanced, and there's many new requirements that the safety element's going to have to present and discuss. Um, and so the, it's um, you know, water supply is an issue, the uh, emergency evacuation is an issue, the roads with one point of ingress egress are issues, the consistency with the current fire code building requirements are issues, um, and what to do with structures, you know, older structures that don't meet the current stringent standards. And so all of these things are now components of the safety element. So it will be part of the project description because it, you know, the project description includes the safety element. And then when we go to the wildfire section of the E I R, the analysis part of, does the safety element present enough policies, robust enough policies that housing can, you know, be proposed in these areas in a safe manner? Um, that's the E I R analysis.
Got it. And um, and is the same true with the sea level rise analysis, or is there some kind of, I mean, there is a definition of the hundred year and the five hundred year, and then the worst-case scenario presented. Um, does that analysis look similar?
There is no reviewing.
What the state asks you to do and.
Right. There, there is no reviewing agency for sea level rise impacts the way there is for Cal Fire. Um, there are very specific requirements for the safety element to address sea level rise and resiliency planning. Um, separate from the safety element and this E I R, San Mateo County, the One Shoreline Program did their civil grand jury report, and the city signed the letter of commitment, uh, committing to to very specific actions. And some of that information is going to make its way into the safety element in the terms of policies or implementation actions. Uh, but sea level rise is something that's, you know, going to be more efficiently addressed at a regional level, so there'll be a lot of focus on coordination with the county and other adjacent jurisdictions i- in the future.
Thank you, Vice Chair Clements. A question from Commissioner Garvey?
Uh, thank you, Chair Ruth. A follow-up question possibly for Barbara. On the safety mitigation measures, are things like uh, community education, community outreach, community evacuation drills, do those rise to the level of being considered a mitigation measure in the program E I R? Or does it have to be like a specific action, like vegetation management?
Uh, that's a really, a very good question. Uh, the the safety element component of the E I R is a little bit interesting because um, the safety element is setting forth the policies the city's going to implement to protect its residents and the built environment from hazards. And so it's going to be a whole body of, you know, high-level goals, more focused policies, and then very focused implementation actions. And that's what the E I R addresses, are all these goals, policies, and implementation actions. And so um, if the safety element is prepared thoughtfully and carefully, when you get to the E I R stage, the E I R should be able to find that the policies the city's adopting as part of the safety element fully address the potential impacts. Um, it may not be immediate in the terms of, for example, sea level rise. No one's going to immediately build levees out on the bay. It's a long, long-term commitment to implementing these policies and programs. Um, but in the meantime, your zoning element could be, um, or your zoning ordinance could be refocused so that uh, projects coming forward could have, you know, a focused review for sea level rise impacts. There's, there's lots of things that the safety element can include that will allow, you know, uh, applications to come in and go forward while the city is implementing its general plan policies. So it's, um, you know, uh, it's, it's an interesting situation. And the safety element isn't just covering housing or residential development, even though it's tied to the housing element, it's covering all, all the, all of the built environment within the city.
Thank you. That was very helpful. I appreciate that response.
That was helpful.
Additional comments or questions from the commissioners? Well, I'd like to thank all of the.
Sorry, Chair, I had one more.
Okay, oh, absolutely. Vice Chair Clements?
Okay, sorry. I, I, this will be my last one, I hope. Um, I also, um, I wanted to follow up on one of the public comments about, um, about value capture, basically, and what happens when the city, uh, proactively basically increases the value of some people's properties without, um, getting community benefits in return. And, um, I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, our attorney or staff or consultants could clarify just what is required at this time under state law? Um, I know that a minimum density is, is defined if sites are going to be used for the affordable housing inventory, as an example, and that adequate inventory is required. And so there's no way around the idea that, you know, some areas would have to meet the new requirement and therefore be identified, and it would not be a negotiation situation. But I, I just wanted to ask in general, um, if the densities were adequate to accommodate the inventory with no changes being made. State law doesn't, does state law say anything at this time about the, um, the interaction between the housing element and what individual project could go forward in a given location? Or does all of that kind of need to be defined upfront? The uses are set and, um, so basically is value capture possible in the, uh, given the housing element requirements anymore, kind of at a big picture level? I think at an individual deal level, it might be different, but just, you know, big picture. I understand David Krabbe's comment about, don't give away density for free if the city's not getting value back from that imparted value to a given landowner. So I understand that. But what does state law say about this?
Um, for the housing element, state law is going to require you to meet and have the, the minimum densities to meet not only affordable, but also just to, um, accommodate the, the RENA housing. And you're right, there's a, you know, state law does not say that there's a way to, uh, to capture this additional density and bonuses that are essentially the, the theoretically the increase in land value because of the, of the change. If a jurisdiction wants to allow for additional density or intensity or other, um, or, or some other benefit for an increase and, and, and in, in additional increase in density or in other types of, um, uh, benefit created, um, that's, uh, given, then the city could do that. But that would be over and above what is the, uh, minimum established in the housing element itself.
Well, and if there were something else standing in the way of actually achieving those identified densities to satisfy the inventory, would HCD even certify the housing element?
You, the, the housing, the housing law process during the, as a housing element review process, HCD is going to make sure that the city is, is going to meet the minimum number of RENA. Anything above that, they're going to want to encourage, have the city establish land use designations and zoning to encourage additional housing. But they're not going to be so necessarily specific and, and, and make the city, um, uh, you know, kind of fully justify that. So if you're going to say to the, if you're going to say to HCD, we can guarantee this level that we're going to allow for additional, um, benefits or perks. If this, if the community does X, Y, and Z, or the developer does X, Y, and Z, then that would be really be a private, a different conversation, and HCD would most likely allow it. Um, but, uh, it, it you would have to really, really be focused on, um, establishing what you need to have for the minimum part. I'm sorry, is that clear? I don't think it was clear.
Yes, it was. Okay. So basically, whatever is needed for the inventory, you need to get in place. And if you wanted to do something different for an additional tranche, that would be a separate conversation apart from the housing element.
Right.
But you know, my understanding is that the state would also say, it's great that you want to get additional value capture, but it also has to be shown that this can't impede housing development. That's a different law, that you can't just say like, let's do thirty percent affordable at every site, right? Like, that's not going to be feasible, and therefore that is not actually legal under state law at this time.
You are correct.
Yeah. Okay, got it. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Well, that was a very informative, um, presentation and discussion and, uh, valuable input from the public comments. Much appreciated. It's an ongoing process through the end of the month. Um, if there are no, no final, final comments, then, um, then we can, um, close our meeting.
Would you like a motion, Chair?
I don't think, I don't think we need, do we need a motion to close the meeting? I don't think so.
No, it's not necessary.
Okay, okay. Uh, the, the, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.